All right, it is 6 o'clock, Monday, November 20th, and we're going to call this workshop session of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda is discussion of the regular agenda items and consent agenda items. The council will go ahead and take a look at what we've got going on. Public hearing is D1. Zone change from heavy industrial to planned development. Item D2, consideration of ordinance granting a zone change from AO to LI.
I have a question about this, a procedural question. We have a question about what's appropriate for any room visit out there if it doesn't matter.
Do you want it?
Is there anything that's more appropriate to discuss here versus in the council chambers out there, or does it matter when we discuss this stuff?
Oh, man.
Like, I have a question about this, yeah. Doesn't matter. Okay, don't just...
Yeah. Patrick, I don't know. I think back here is more, you're going to get staff information versus...
Yeah, I want to make sure there's our way to do it, so...
Yeah, versus out there, you can probably get more from whoever's here to speak.
So, the, when I looked at this, this is, I guess, first of all, maybe it's a Stacy question. So, how far away are we from a park here? I look at all that green space and was wondering, are we five minutes from a park in this?
No, we're far. This is one of our deserts, but we are, you know, this is one of the places that we're watching as we develop. And when we have corporate punch through and the trail comes through on that, that will open up some more options for us to consider. So, it's one of the places that we're watching.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, how big is that track? The two acres, I read two acres, and then somewhere, it's one of three, I'm assuming they're all about the same size.
Yeah, those 5.2 acres.
Absolutely. So, they're all about the same size, I guess, because it's divided into three. So, it's about 15 acres. So, I guess, when I look at this, we're not just approving one. If we approve one, the other two are going to come over after that, I'm assuming. So, we're basically approving 15 acres. We're all practical purposes, and I just wanted to hear your opinion on that.
Well, portion of that will be the corporate right-of-way.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
All right. D3, consideration of ordinance granting SUP for ADU and for contractor's yard.
I've been asking about this one as well. So, I've had, the way in Lewisville, but I had a friend of mine that they, it wasn't uncommon in the hotel industry to just pile a bunch of people up into a duplex. I'm just wondering what kind of protections we have. This is actually going to be a living space and not a place, just a warehouse, a bunch of workers.
The answer to that is through the SUP process. So, you have the controls on the SUP, but, you know, I think it goes down, I mean, there's five individuals that are going to be living there, and then there's also occupant load that were, you know, the International Property Maintenance Code has, per bedroom, how many people can be in there.
And I noticed it said, it meets the definition of a family. We talked about this with STRs. What is the definition of a family?
I can read it to you. So, one or more individuals each related to the other by blood, marriage, or adoption, a group of not more than five individuals excluding servants who are living together in a dwelling unit or a household care facility.
Okay. And that's not applicable for STRs for some reason, but it is applicable to this? Or does it matter? Is this FYI here?
No, I mean...
I just found it was interesting, it says, well, meets the definition of family, therefore, we should go ahead and allow this. But we talked about what meets the definition of family when it meets the STRs. I didn't understand why it's applicable here, but it was applicable for STR conversations.
Well, I think one of the issues is going to be about, how do you determine if someone's actually related? So, are we, we're not, there's an enforcement difficulty in all of it, because you're going to go in and start asking for people's birth certificates and things like that, you're not going to. So, I think there's just a difficulty of enforcement on it.
Okay. That's all I have for that.
Question, if it's an SUP, can you just say five and be done with it? Or is there, are there legal ramifications to that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I have to look at it because I just, I mean, it's no longer, the way I understand it is because it's no longer going to be a residential building, it's a non-residential building. So, like, if you think of, often think of Austin where there were houses and now there are offices or restaurants. And so, it was my understanding that this is now a meat, an accessory dwelling unit. It's no longer going to be a single-family house.
Right.
So, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, just in my head, we have a lot more power around an SUP as to what kinds of restrictions are, because it's a negotiation. And so, is that, is that a negotiable point legally? I don't know. And if we need to go to closed session for that, then we can...
We'd have tables, not the answer to that.
It is a pretty good-sized dwelling. Four bedrooms, I think, if you like that five.
Five, I mean, is it still being used as a residence?
It is.
It is.
So, it's not, it's not a non-residential building.
So... Right. So, after we talked, Richard clarified, so it is, right now, the plan may be to turn it into an office use, but it is a non-residential building. I mean, sorry, it is a residential building. It's only used for people living there at this point. Which, under the code, just to clarify, because I don't know if it was clear in the memo, when you have, there's an accessory, for any type of supplemental use regulations, which your accessory dwelling unit regulations are accessory dwelling, accessory, sorry. Where is Richard? What is the word I'm using, trying to find?
Accessory dwelling.
No, accessory dwelling unit regulations are supplemental use regulations. Sorry, it's a mouthful. On those, if you are slightly deviating from them, which is talks about this term of non-residential building, because this is a residential building, you can give an SUP for it. That's one of the reasons why we have to require an SUP for this. That was a lot, but just wanted to...
So, I ask that because if there is a concern that this could be more than five people in there, do we have the ability to limit it to five and just be done with it because of the SUP? If that's the concern.
So, I think that dwelling actually could house probably 10 if it's two per bedroom. So, it's actually a good-sized dwelling unit. You know, I've just seen where people stack eight people up in a half duplex just because they're warehousing folks just for hotel industry work. I just wanted to see what opportunity we had to make sure that doesn't happen here.
At the end of the day, enforcement's always going to be the issue.
Okay.
There's no time limit on this, like, there's nothing pressing on this, because it's just uses trying to be made, brought into compliance. So, if you guys want us to look into that, we could table this in the next meeting.
Now, my question, if it's already, it's in existence and being used right now, it doesn't fall into a non-conforming use?
Um, I don't know.
The contractor's yard is the non-conforming part. So, that's the part that we're trying to approve with the SUP. If it were just a residential home, they would be perfectly conforming with five people living there. Now, they proposed, and attached to this ordinance is their proposal that says, you know, requesting this dual SUP for a contractor's yard and an accessory dwelling unit for the workers to live in because they, you know, because they're associated with the contractor's yard to manage the materials that are on the property.
Yeah, they have oversight 24/7.
Right.
So, it's not, it's actually not a non-conforming use, because it's not like the law's changed on them. They did something to change.
Right.
So, it's, that's why we have to make them kosher by our regulations. It's not like we can just say, you're grandfathered as you are. They took actions that made themselves...
For that, yeah.
At compliance.
The other, the other part of the parcel is what's triggering this. Okay, yeah. Got it.
So, if you're good, I'm just exploring corners. I'm not hearing a consensus to put this on hold any further, so I think we'll move forward. But interesting conversation for the next one. Item four, public hearing, consideration of ordinance amending volume two of the Lewisville City Code as the UDC, amending Article IV, Chapter IV. Questions?
[inaudible].
Consent agenda. Item five, approval of amendments.
I think you're all wrong.
That's one. Item six, approval of a resolution of the city council approving an advanced funding Item seven, approval of updated social services priorities for the community to develop block grant and city social service agency funding programs.
Can I touch on something?
Yes.
So, I just wanted to clarify, so on this, on these needs ranking, this is important because when we have a notice of funding opportunity in the future, nonprofits will come in and propose what they want funding for. If you are higher up in the needs ranking, you are more likely to get a higher score, so that gets you more, more likely to get the funding on it. I did want to clarify a few things on here. So, like, if you see housing services, they do say homelessness diversion, so that's at your top, which has been a consistent discussion for us. If you look down below and you see homeless services, we do provide homeless service dollars right now, and those things would equate to Journey to Dream and our support for them, Friends of the Family, support for them in the past, and Salvation Army as well. Those have all provided homeless services, went into providing food, shelter, meal, clothing, and counseling. So, I did want to just point out the difference between that homeless diversion and homeless services there.
Item eight, contract award to our insurance company. Item nine...
This was the new company that we went with last year.
Last year, yes.
And we've had, have they even been used at all? Utilized since we contracted?
No, they haven't, we haven't reached access over this last year.
We haven't had to.
But they've been used to work with this last year. Good work.
Never reached that point, so there's no...
Yeah, thanks. Item nine, local agreement between Denton County and the city for sharing of proceeds of the sale of contraband seized or forfeitures. D10, appointments to Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team. I would like to make a recommendation that Ronnie Cade take this seat. She has experience with United Way and leans pretty close to her heart. Plus, she's been really magnanimous, making sure to share the wealth over the last few months. Because she's asked for several boards, and we've been kind of juggling these, but I'm going to have to fall off. The timing on this has just become really difficult, and I'd love to see Ronnie on it, if that's okay.
Yeah, I would like to be on.
Yep, okay. All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Does that earn me back some points?
Still at 2:52.
Item eleven, consideration of acceptance of the resignation of Dr. Walter Legg, our licensed veterinarian on the Animal Services Advisory Committee.
We have, on this one, we have one application. And it's been, I think Amanda's done a good job at finding someone. I have tried and tried to find a licensed veterinarian, even with dropping the city, the city boundaries on that, it's been almost impossible. By statute, we have to have that representative and the animal rescue representative there. So, we actually have...
You've got Don Harden as...
And you were the one that has talked to him in the past, being a citizen at large.
Yep.
But he falls under the shelter, or not shelter, but...
Animal welfare.
Thank you. Animal welfare rep and...
And then we've got Kimberly Mullik.
Right, for the veterinarian. And we, we haven't had a meeting, but we're going to be having a meeting in December. We have to get this filled. We have little to no participation want.
Okay.
So, if they want it, then we've got to get this filled.
That's great for both of them to step up.
Yes.
Then we'll move into reports, but we do have closed session tonight. All right. No further comments or questions on the agenda. We're going to go to move into workshop session, item B, presentation and discussion of Lake District, amending. And we have Amira Sane, and I apologize if I messed that up, so...
You know, we're here not first.
Thank you. She's with BAS Media, and she's going to present.
So, before she picks off, I just wanted to say a couple things. So, in May of this year, we started working with BAS Media on rebranding what's known as Northern Gateway in Lake Park into the Lake District. And so, since then, we've been working with them, and Amira's going to go over the process that they went through since May, and they'll also go over proposed reading strategies as well.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Amira Sane. As you all heard, I have Lennon from our creative and John from strategy. We all work hand-in-hand on this project as well as others. And we just want to kind of, again, recap how we got here, how we got to the logos. Since May, we've been busy, busy trying to get everything together and make sure that we come up with a brand that's going to make an impact for the city of Louisville, and make sure that it impacts not only the city, but brings in revenue and attracts different businesses and patrons to the area that was formerly known as the Northern Gateway, that is now known as the Lake District. So, how do we get there? We started out with an in-depth audit. We audited all the information that you all provided, that you've done such a great job at, from the maps to projected businesses that were rejoining the area, and what if the area was perceived at online, even digitally already. We did an in-depth competitor analysis, where we looked at other entertainment districts that would be seen as immediate competition and some even aspirational competition. We talked to and interviewed the stakeholders within the city who had a, played a direct role in getting us to the point that we joined, and who would continue to play a role as we grew the process and walked through this process. We interviewed residents through a survey that they took online. We had a brand strategy workshop, and we developed brand strategy, which we'll share with you all, what we came up with and what we've done to this point. And then, of course, after the brand strategy, once we, it was a consensus that we were moving in the right direction, a direction that was going to continue to elevate the city of Louisville and the Lake District area. We then drove on to the logo development, where we used the brand's voice that we identified, the positioning that we identified, and the folks who we want to attract to this area to come up with a logo that we felt would kind of answer the call and represent the brand in the best light possible. And what we did to get to this point is we actually had a workshop similar to this one, where we came up and decided that we were in consensus with the final logos and that we would comprise everything today to share with you all.
One thing to note on stakeholder interviews, we did also include some of the surrounding development partners as well.
Yes, thank you for that. So, a persona. When you think about a brand's persona, and in layman's terms, this is the call, or I guess basically the attitude of the people who we want to attract. So, we want to make sure that we really have the voice of the person who we want to attract through our marketing, make sure that everything that we create, from the logo to the brand voice, was something that they can easily identify with. And because this is a city and we want to attract a plethora of different audiences, we came up with two different personas. So, persona number one is the Take Flight Crew. These are the young professionals who are here in Louisville and who will be moving here in Louisville, who are constantly be attracted, being attracted by all the new amenities that you have here and all the things that are at their disposal. These are the folks who sometimes work from home in our new world, right? They work from home and they want to live, work, and play close to home. These are folks who are, I guess, the more action-prone, the ones who still kind of go out a few times a week, who don't necessarily cook for every meal, maybe they have a pet, maybe they're newly engaged, maybe they are, maybe not right out of college, but mid, between that first decade out of college, five to 10 years out of college, that's who this group is. These are the folks who we would think would want to live closer into the Lake District, who may patronize it a couple of times a week and want to have that one place that they can go where somebody definitely knows their name, for lack of better words. The next persona that we have is the person, the family, right? We have, this group is called the Memory Makers. These are the folks with small children or those who are empty nesters, who still have homes here in Louisville, who love the area and do not want to leave the area, but they still want to dine, eat, and have entertainment close to home, not necessarily live right next door to it, but they still want to have it in their city, and they want something in their city that they can brag about as well. All right. So, this brings us to our brand strategy recommendations, those points I kind of touched on at the beginning. So, everything that we did to get to this point was really to define the brand vision, right? The brand positioning, the brand personality, the affiliation, which is what's associated with that brand, which brought us to the logo.
Any questions on that before we jump on? Comments or pearls of wisdom? Definitely. So, this is a little bit about how the sausage is made when you, when you create a brand, and I thought it might be helpful to give you kind of a marketing one-on-one definition of what a brand strategy is. And in essence, it's a framework for how you present yourself to your constituents and how you do that consistently throughout time and throughout all your marketing communication. So, in essence, a brand is a promise. It says that you're going to commit to delivering the same type of experience time and time again, and in doing so, that's how you become not just a good company, but a great brand overall. So, I think, let me just go back here. So, the components of a brand strategy are the vision, personality, sorry, positioning, personality, brand affiliation. Logo's not really a part of that, but we put it there because we've got a logo for you and we're going to show you what that looks like, so... All right, so, I never have figured out how to do this.
I'll be your banner.
Go ahead. Okay, so, how about that?
I can also do it from here.
One more, how about that?
There you go. Flick through it.
Skip all these words right here. It's a lot of words. What a brand vision essentially is, is your highest calling. What do you represent, what's the highest ideal you represent to your, to your customer base? And we've identified that as unifying people, inspiring connections, and appreciating outdoor spaces.
I got you.
Did you do that by ear or not?
I did. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, a brand, this is so funny. A brand positioning is really, it breaks down three things for you. Your target audience, not defined demographically, but attitudinally, your competitive set, who you compete with overall, and then what's your most compelling benefit overall. So, here's, here's what we have defined, and I'll just kind of break down each piece. And it's written in a very traditional kind of packaged goods-type statement. Says, "To those seeking a life balanced by outdoor pursuits, the Lake District of Louisville is the only lifestyle district in DFW that offers unforgettable lakeside experiences fostered by a close-knit eclectic community." So, our target audience, kind of attitudinally, we're looking at them as they want a balanced lifestyle. They don't want to be, you know, in concrete and glass. They want, they want a little bit of outdoor activity that is balancing them overall. A lifestyle district, rather than calling it an entertainment district, we thought lifestyle district would be a nice way to present that overall. And then, unforgettable lakeside experiences fostered by a close-knit eclectic community.
Can I pause on that, too? I think also that's really important and powerful, is choosing to not go entertainment district, which I think a lot of what we've talked about in the Northern Gateways has been entertainment. But it's really, it's tipping our hat to the fact that people live there, too, and how different that is from lots of other entertainment districts. Is that the balance?
Exactly. Yeah. Any other comments? You're clicking it, thanks. Brand personality. Okay, so, a lot of times in the marketing world, you know, there's very little differentiation between you and your competition. So, one of the ways you differentiate yourself is through your personality and how that manifests in all the marketing communications that you do. Thank you. And so, we've defined that collectively as a group and with staff as vibrant, so we want it to be kind of, you know, very lively, energetic, very colorful in a way, but at the same time, we want to be welcoming, right? So, we don't want to be, you know, I guess, too, not approachable as a brand overall. We certainly want to be down-to-earth, so... And then, and then the user affiliation really is, you know, what club do you join when you become associated with Lakeside District, right? And we've defined that as lake vibe living. So, it's all about, it's all about the lake, right? And all the vibe that it gets you. So, that's our kind of connective tissue. All right, you want to show them the logo?
I do. Can we go back one slide?
Yeah.
I just wanted to just kind of mention that lake vibe living isn't necessarily all about the lake. It's, even when you're lake-adjacent and you're in some of the other, you know, where if you're living there, going to restaurants, shopping, the fact that it's next to the lake, like, the lake is sort of got this halo effect over the entire Northern Gateway or Lake District. So, lake vibe living is bigger than just the lake itself. It's a, it's a state of mind, really, is what it is. Okay, so, we can go to the next slide. I might even try my hand at...
Go for it. You can worry about it.
Is it up to go down?
Yeah.
That's not intuitive. So, just so you guys know, so, I'm a little bit of a clown. I'm a creative director. So, these are the business people. They're the grown-ups. I'm the, kind of the guy that comes in, I take what they have determined to be the best strategy to, you know, set you guys apart, and I find creative ways to make memorable ad campaigns, logos, you know, videos, whatever you want, that are going to stick to the roof of people's minds. Okay, so, what you're about to see is a logo. This is just the tip of the iceberg, okay? It's time to get hyped, people.
All right.
All right, so, we explored, we looked at internally dozens of ideas before we came up with, I think about five to eight that we actually brought in to the, to the marketing team here. From there, we got it narrowed down to two. And so, you guys get to see the top two right now, and you get to guess which one is the best one, and you will be quizzed on it, and points will be added or subtracted. I said the point system.
Since one of them actually is reminiscent of our neighbor to the north, I can tell you that you'll lose in a minute.
Yes.
So, we're not going to have to spend a whole lot of time on it.
I mean, we could just, like, get to it, so we could have our say on it.
Perfect, perfect. I like your style. Here we go.
Yeah, I just want to...
Use the clicker.
Yeah, clicker. Here we go. Okay, so, this first one, I won't belabor it too much. I just want to point out a couple of things about it. First of all, since the lake and the lake vibe is what we're all about, we wanted to have the word lake big in bullets, the first thing your eyes sees, and we've even doubled down on that by having the E being formed by waves. There's an interesting little thing going on here with the R, so that it kind of, kind of has a little bit of stopping power when you look at it, like, something's a little bit different about the way that the type is actually handled here. Of course, of Louisville, that was something that we weren't told we had to do, but we think the city needs to give credit for this awesome jewel. It's not the jewel of the Nile, it's the jewel of Lake Louisville. So, that's sort of it in a nutshell. We'll go to the next slide. We always just like to show, you know, what it would look like. These are just some quick comps, but just showing it, you know, on a hoodie, on an outdoor board, on some swag, on a cup, you know, sky's the limit. It's a very simple and bold logo that scales up or down. It's very clean, so, anyway, that's, that's the first one. It's got universal appeal, it's got, you know, the ability to use different colors. We haven't really locked in on a color yet, but we know that it'll, it'll be something bright and inviting, and there might even be, you know, two or three different colors in our color palette that we would recommend.
Sure. Yeah, let me just say something here, mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The, when I looked at this, I went, oh, Lake Dallas, no. Then I looked at it and I went, hair salon or spa?
You talking about this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's like, no.
Yeah, this one definitely was, was the, the one that we weren't recommending. I'll say that. It has some things going for it, but if...
Not really.
If you don't like it.
I think we're good. I think we've saved the time.
Not really.
Yeah, so, but just so you know, the logo itself is the tip of the iceberg. That's going to, you know, it can be animated for social, if we can go back, yeah, there's two next to each other. We can see these waves. If you can picture eventually, like, in a social media or a video, those waves could come in and then lock in and create the E. Like, we're going to, it's going to have a lot more meat on it when the campaign actually gets fleshed out, but this is a great first step. So, that's where we are. Thank you. Thank you.
I think that was, that was clean and easy. I love it.
No, no.
Thank you, guys, for bringing this. I appreciate all the work involved. Item C, we have our Pollinated Prairie Program update. Save that five times fast. We've got our Preserve and Green Belt Manager, Chris Chastain, presenting.
All right. Well, the plant, I guess, will follow the market, so that's fine. Good evening, Mayor, Council, fellow staff, and our guests here this evening. Let's see if I can do it. We're cute. All right. So we're going to talk about the efforts that we've done with our pollinator programs on pollinators and native plants in different areas of Lewisville. So first, a little bit of background. I note to everyone at the table, and a lot of people in this room, Lewisville 2025 needs no introduction, but for some of our guests and anyone else referencing this later on, Lewisville 2025 is the vision of Lewisville and where we want to be on our 100th birthday as a city. So we set forth some big moves, things that guide us in some of our initiatives. The first of those is the Green Centerpiece. And following the Green Centerpiece is, of course, extending the green, which is how do we physically and visually stretch that Green Centerpiece throughout Lewisville and beyond the properties that lie within the center. From there, we get a little bit more details moving down into Parks and Recreation. Of course, we recently adopted our new iteration of the Master Plan, known as our Healthy Infrastructure Plan. It calls for several action items. One of those does relate to pollinator efforts. And even further down, our Green Centerpiece Master Strategy, which is a document that we have adopted along with the Corps of Engineers, Lewisville Independent School District, University of North Texas, and the Friends of Lila. And so just to highlight some of the action items within these documents that deal with what we're discussing today. In the Healthy Infrastructure Plan, Objective 5.3 is to design new and improve existing parks and open spaces to support nature and wildlife. And the specific action item is 5.3.2, which calls to support the residential pollinator program and incorporate pollinator areas into the parks and open spaces system to create monarch waste stations and support local ecology. So these are things that we've set forth as plans for our staff, and we're just following up on those. Within the Green Centerpiece Master Strategy, Action Item Number 13 is supporting the Residential Native Planting Certification Program. And Action Item 20 is establishing a Green Centerpiece and extending the Green Maintenance Program, of which this is a part of that as well. So why? There's lots of different benefits, some ecological benefits. Here you can see a map of the monarch migration path. You can see Lewisville is just right in the heart of it. So we are supporting the migration path of the monarch butterfly as well as migratory birds. We are a migratory highway for all different kinds of species. We recently put some public art to it, Migratory Perch over at Thrive Nature Park. I hope everyone's had the chance to see it. If you haven't, go visit it. It's awesome and it's amazing. You can see we're right here, right in the spring breeding area. And so this definitely increases the wildlife and supports those initiatives. Other ecological benefits. This is such a cool diagram of what we're doing. So these are all native plants. You have some big blue stems, side oats, grandma, all different kinds of things, little blue stem. You can see these are native plants that have deep, these roots stretching to the ground. And what that does is helps hold that soil together, prevents erosion. It allows these plants to access water that's stored deep underground. The plants up top, they soak up carbon, and they send it down to help re-fortify the nutrients in here. So many cool things happening. And these are all native plants. And if you can see, all the way, it's hard to see. This is what we get with our common turf grasses. This is your Bermuda grass and your St. Augustine, and that's the root system, that tiny, teeny, tiny little thing. So this is what we're trying to move over to and really take hold of all those benefits. Health benefits as well. So as I mentioned with the carbon sequestration, we're getting cleaner air in these areas. We're getting lots of fresh oxygen. We can detect that through air quality monitoring. We've established some of our partners at UNT. We're getting improved water, again, with that stormwater. These native plants allow that water to slow down and not sheet and run off. It lets it soak into the ground and naturally filter. You don't have litter and oil and chemicals washing into our waterways within our watershed. And then mental health benefits. There's been study after study after study that shows people who are able to spend time in nature and make those connections have improved mood. They have reduced stress, reduced anxiety. And so giving residents of Lewisville more opportunities to take advantage of that is another big plus on the healthcare that we're providing to our residents. And economic benefits, money, money, money. So going through this quickly, this is a study that was published in Economics Sustainability Journal. And so this is breaking down the monetary benefit of these areas. It's done by US dollar per hectare per year. And so the benefits you gain from pollution regulation is around $647 per hectare per year. It goes down to carbon sequestration of $3,000, energy savings of $1,400, and this is all on average. They did a study with 25 different cities, 20 of which were in the United States and five were international. And for each of these, you see the range of the low end and the high end, and so these are averages. As it breaks down, it looks at positive health effects, recreation services. You're looking at about $9,700 per hectare per year. A hectare is about two and a half acres, kind of like two football fields about is the size we're talking about. And so looking at different areas, this is a benefit-cost ratio. So the amount of money it takes to make this conversion versus the benefits you're getting back set as a ratio. On the low land is some of your aquatic systems. They just don't have the same access to air and land as the other ones, so they're a little bit lower. But you move up from aquatics into wetlands, to forests, to woodlands, and finally, on the high end, grasslands, where you're getting anywhere from five-to-one ratio return on your investment, all the way up as high as 35-to-one return on your investment. And so we're working in prairies and grasslands primarily with this project, so we're really getting the most bang for our buckminds. The project. So what are we doing? Last year, as an action item, we received $150,000. Thank you. And what we've done with that is we quickly partnered with UNT. We have access to their research. They have a four-acre pollinator prairie that they've done all different kinds of things on, so we got a jump start, didn't have to start from square one. We also established an internship program. So the resources that we've purchased with this money, we bought mature plants, we bought lots and lots of seeds, over 1,000 pounds worth of seed. We've purchased different equipment that allowed our staff to be more efficient through this project. We purchased materials to accomplish some of the work. We established the intern program. We were able to hire four undergraduate interns from UNT's ecology program. We're excited about that. They're still working today. We have been working on signage, which we're going through the design process now. We'll move to fabrication and installation. We'll discuss that a little bit later as well. And we've hosted a few outreach events to educate people and let them become involved in the work that we're doing. So the objectives for Phase One were to first plan and discuss different approaches to establishing these plants so that we could measure them and see what might work better long-term. Convert. So here we're specifically discussing the conversion of 19 acres of medians along Garden Ridge into native Texas wildflower habitats. Assess, assist the planting and mowing strategies to reduce costs as well as taking observations on-site to see the progress of our efforts. And then engage. Of course, we want to engage and educate the community by providing outreach events. We can do all we want. If the residents don't feel like they know what's happening, back us up, it'll be over like that. So we want to bring them along with us and make them allies with us. So looking at Phase One, we have this broken up into different plots. Plots 1, 4, 6, and 7 in the purple were where we were going to plant mature plants, plants that have already sprouted and grown and just taken stripes of the earth. Plots 2 and 3 in the green across from Valley Ridge Elementary is where we decided to till the ground and install seeds in the fall of 2022 and just go from a seeding aspect and see how it prepared. And then Plot 5, we tried an experimental process known as solarization, and that will be explained in detail later. And then we had a little change of plans with Plot 8. So back here on these purple plots, we went to planting plants, and that ground was like concrete. It was like trying to dig into a parking lot. And so we had another area already established, Plot 8, and we were able to install and mature plants there and keep the project rolling and the research coming. So this is the progress we saw. This is at Plot 2 directly across from Valley Ridge. This is where we tilled and we seeded last fall. And so this was our first growing season with the plants. You can see in early April, primarily grass, nothing's really popping up yet. You have some little sprouts. And just shortly around two weeks later, the plants start to come up. You can see some color down here, and things are moving in the right direction. And by May, we have a full bloom. It's hard to tell from this wide angle, but it was just covered in Indian blanket and oranges and yellows and purples, and it was gorgeous. And the kids would come through, and they loved it. And it was great. We were extremely, extremely happy with the results we got out there. In June, you see some of that orange go away. Your spring bloomers are starting to go dormant, and your next wave of color is coming in. So this is lemon bee balm. It's this tall purple flower. And again, you just see color throughout the median, lots of purples and butterflies coming in and out and fun stuff. And then it's July and August in Texas, and it's not very fun to be up plants. So the rain stops and the sun doesn't stop, and so we move towards more of this brown, but there's still very important things happening in this space. These plants are dropping seeds, establishing that seed bank, so we don't want to touch it at that time. We had to kind of get through those dog days of summer before we move on to September, October, where we get our fall bloomers and color gets to come back, and we get that fall bloom of pollinators until finally, by the end of October, just about everything is done blooming. We're moving towards winter. And so for us, November is a perfect time to mow. So this was taken just a week or two ago, and we've now mowed out that median, and we're going to get ready for Round Two. So that's what it looks like throughout our growing season.
How many times do we have to mow that before we do this project?
How many times do we have to mow before or during the project?
No, no. Before.
It was just grass. Before we started.
Four times a year, five times a year, twice a month?
So that was on a contract. It was getting mowed about 40 cycles, four times a year. With ours, we only mow it one time a year annually. And this would be in the timeframe, November, December, maybe late October, just depending. But our goal is just to mow it one time a year. Solarization. So coming back to that Plot 5 and explaining kind of what's going on in the picture. Plot 5 was especially dominated by Bermuda grass. We decided this was a perfect spot to test this out. Solarization is when we are using materials to both block the sun and photosynthesis process that happens, as well as trap heat. And what we're trying to do is essentially cook and decay that top layer of plants and soil so that it decomposes, increase a new layer of organic matter so that as we pull this up, everything on the surface has died, but decomposed, and it gives us a nice layer of topsoil to begin the next planting. So we put out 22 rolls of 10-by-100-foot tarps. We used just about 1,500 bags of soil to hold them down for wind and storms and vehicular traffic there on Garden Ridge, about $5,600 to cover half an acre, but using all common materials that can be picked up at Home Depot or Lowe's or wherever else. We're very crowded this day. And so what that looks like at completion, these are some aerial photos. You can see where it's all laid out. The entire median was about an acre, so we covered half of that. And this will allow us to directly compare the two methods as we prepare to seed this fall and see them bloom in the spring. So this is when we started lifting the materials. So we would cut the soil bags and dump it out and left these little mounds that they would get smoothed over later. This was in July, so you can already see that the grass is green or greenish at least on this side. And underneath, we have total loss and it's starting to decompose. And after we got everything lifted up, we took another aerial to see. So you can clearly see the brown section, the solarization, and then the mixed section of untouched. So that comes. We did all this work. What did we find out? The plant community structure. So prior to the project, we recorded 33 different species of plants. We, with what we seeded, there was 47 known species of plants. We planted 20 different species of those mature plants within that median. And then we have what we call volunteers. And so what a volunteer is, is means that we observed that plant, but we didn't put it there. So how does that happen? Well, you're wildlife. Birds come through, critters come through, insects, pollinators, and they bring seeds with them, and they drop seeds. So we ended up observing 95 species of plants that, within these medians, that we know we didn't put there and we didn't observe before we started the project, which led us to the total plant species of 142, starting from 33 as a result of all these projects. And then I'll touch on this graph as well. We have this breakdown. This is as of August. We now know that these medians are now 70% native, which is a huge increase from where we started, 21% non-native, which means it's not necessarily native, but it's not invasive. And then, of course, invasive is 14%. That's the best. We're trying to choke that out. So tracking the biodiversity growth with iNaturalist. iNaturalist, for those who aren't familiar, it's an app on your smartphone. It lets you point your camera at a plant. It'll recognize what that plant is. It'll tell you. You can stop there because it's just a fun game to play, but also you can log it in a project. So this, these medians are an actual project for us. If you go out there today and take it, it'll record it into our data set, and that helps us out and keeps growing our observations. So prior to the project, there were 56 observations in the area. As of August of this year, that number's gone up to 961 different observations. We have 20 different people listed as observers. So our undergraduate team was four members. Our professor was made five. We had about two or three city staff involved, so eight, which is, we have at least 12 other people outside of our own project who are helping us make observations, which is great. And some of those came as a direct result of our community outreach. And number of taxa of different species that we have seen, 266. These are some of the more common plants that we see out there. So you have your Indian blanket, your Texas yellow star, your lemon bee balm, standing cypress, bloop on it, black-eyed season. As we saw, there's a lot of different ones, but these are the ones that typically you'll see blanket the whole median in April and May. You'll see all the orange from there in June. You'll see all the purple from the bee balm. Recommended plants. So as we went through this, we were taking into consideration what plants give us the best successes. That's based on what is native to North Central Texas. Does it tolerate drought weather? Did we see it effectively germinate from that seed? Is it pollinator-friendly? Does it provide good coverage? We're trying to stretch that bloom season to keep color year-round, so we're looking for everything from early spring to late fall blooms in the mix. We want a low to mid-range height, especially when we're considering what we're putting in the medians. We don't want anything that grows tall. And then we want a mix of annuals and perennials. So we have a short list of grasses and a list of plants that we think work well for long-term Tracking the biodiversity growth with iNaturalist. This graph is so cool. So you can see prior to October of 2022, there were 60 species identified. After we did our baseline survey, that jumped to 133, and it stayed 133 through December and into March. And then once our seeds started to bloom and our wildfires came in, the number skyrocketed to 240, and then by August, we were at 266. So just from one year of doing seeds on those two medians, we've already doubled the amount of species that have been found at that location. And some of the common wildlife that we found, all these pictures were taken from our observations. So we saw some western kingbirds, scissor-toed flycatcher, American bumblebee, Halloween pennant, and checkered skippers. Amongst a lot of different other little animals and bunny rabbits, all kinds of fun stuff. So going back to solarization, to solarize or not to solarize. So the benefits are that you're going to kill your pest insects, you're going to remove those weeds and invasive grasses, you're going to create the organic matter, and there's no chemicals needed at all, which is great. The disadvantage is that while you kill your pests, you kill everything, so even the good stuff's going to go. You're creating that plastic waste because it takes a ton of plastic to get that job done. You have to figure out how to secure it during storms and high winds. And we found it was pretty costly and difficult to do on a large scale, with us having about a team of eight or 10, it still took us four days to get it all down. So would we do it again? When and why to apply solarization? We think it's extremely useful on small plots, especially in places that you have heavy invasive plant distribution. But on large-scale settings, we don't know that it's the most beneficial. We'll get a really good idea after this spring, after this has been particularly seeded. seeded, but knowing the results that we saw just from the first plot that had no solarization, we, we think that, you know, your success, it might be like a ninety-two percent versus ninety-four percent, and is it worth the money and time? Maybe not. But on smaller, smaller areas, that can be done quickly with little resources and little labor, and that you're fighting, you're really fighting a heavy invasive distribution, it's, it's a great method. It, it worked. So what's next for us? Right now, we are in Fall '23. We're working on our mowing of all of our areas to get them prepared. Tilling and seeding, if you go out to Garden Ridge right now, it's all nice and tilled up. You can go see it if you didn't drive down there today. We're also seeding, this picture was taken about two weeks ago over in Castle Hills, where we did a seeding project over there. So we're getting all of our areas seeded, and then just seeding. So some of our already established areas, our pocket prairies that have been in place for three or four years at this point, we're not going to till them, because that's going to do more damage than good. We're going to disrupt that seed bank that's been established. So we just got to go seed it. We just got to go put our seeds, press them into the ground, and then move on. After about five years is typically when we would pull back seeding completely, because it should be able to just cycle on its own from the established seed bank. So what are we adding this year? In terms of medians, we're adding an additional twenty-four acres of pollinator area. That includes the medians of Garden Ridge going from 407 down to College. And then Valley Ridge Parkway, we're going from Garden Ridge headed east to I-35, and that's going to, this is just about an additional sixteen acres, and then Valley Ridge is giving us an additional eight or so acres. And these are, this is all going to be new added plantings. And then for pollinator areas, we have two different spots, and what's really cool and unique about both of these are that these were both started by resident input. In each of these areas, residents came to us and said, I've seen what you're doing, this is so cool, how can I get it next to my house? And we worked with them in both situations, and these have both been tilled and seeded, and now they're just waiting for spring, and they're going to see the wonderful wildflowers. This was part of a Giving for Green Spaces project in partnership with Keep Los Fel Beautiful, and then as well, Keep Los Fel Beautiful, this was a local resident who created an adopted spot, and then we worked with them to get it seeded with wildflowers. And that's going to give us another acre to the project. Education outreach. So again, like we said, we want to bring with people what else. So our interns are, are still busy working away. Most of the hard labor is done for the year, so now they're into the design piece. This is a draft of a sign that they've created. This would be kind of a walking path pedestrian sign, has a lot of words and verbiage, so definitely a situation where you're going to have time to stop and read, as well as a QR code, so you can take out your phone, scan it, get more information. We wouldn't put something like this on Longest Street, I guess. Wow. And so that, that's really cool. This will take you to a webpage that will give you access to a lot of different links, like they're saying, the green page, the Parks in Lewisville page, a map where you can see all the pollinator areas in town, which you'll see a little bit later. And then we're also looking at more in-depth interpretive signage. Again, the QR code is really cool, and it's fun and it's nice, but not everybody has that same kind of access, and we don't want to, you know, prevent anybody from getting information, so we were considering more in-depth. These wouldn't be found anywhere, it'd be found in extremely high-traffic areas in town for people to see it. And then we'd also be designing roadside signage with simple, you know, three or four words that you can just see as you go by, just to let you know what it is you're driving by, and the flowers, and all those kinds of things. And so these designs are in place right now. We're in drought mode. We're hoping to have these finalized by January, so we can move to fabrication in February and March, and have them installed with April '24, as those flowers start to pop and bloom, to let people know. Again, so every, if you weren't familiar, Roots for Wings is our newly adopted residential pollinator certification program. This is actually our first garden that was certified as part of the program back in June. This is an overhead at the garden at the animal shelter, so we've been working the last couple of weeks to create a demonstration garden that residents can visit and see what a Roots for Wings garden looks like out of public space. The animal shelter has also told us in advance that we're welcome to use their meeting room for workshops, and we'd be able to walk out and walk through the garden with people participating in the program. So that's been really cool. And then the Mayor's Monarch Pledge. This is actually a certificate from 2022, because I was putting this presentation together, that's all I had. But last week, we did receive word that we've been certified for 2023, so we, we've done that, so thank you, everybody. The marketing people got an applause, I could get one too. And this, this is the badge we get for doing a minimum of eight or more action items as part of the program. We were able to commit to ten this year, so that's great for us. And that's another way that we advertise this, and we'll put it on social media and those things, so that people can see that we're committed as a city, and hopefully intrigue them to research more. This is the map we were talking about. Jose Martinez, our admin analyst, put this together for us. So on this map, which is available on our Parks website, you actually get a map of every location that we have pollinator gardens in Lewisville, so that if you feel so inclined, you're able to go visit them, or see what the closest one to your house is, and go visit. So as we continue to add areas, we'll continue building out this map and give people that access. And then again, as I mentioned, this website has information for people to learn a little bit more, it explains the benefits, and it gives you a link to locations, which links with this map right here. Custom seed mix, as I mentioned earlier, we've been identifying plants that we see successful. The idea for that, our seed vendors, they're American seed, and we've already had preliminary conversations with them to create a custom Lewisville mix, of seeds that we know work well in Lewisville, that give us the best success rates, that give us the most color year-round. And so as we work towards that, we want to have a custom mix that we utilize throughout town. We're going to call it a urban median mix, so that they can market it to other cities in North Texas, but we will all in this room know. So plans for fiscal year 23, '24. We'll complete the seeding and conversion of existing and new pollinator areas. Again, we, we have eleven acres of existing, and we're adding twenty-five new acres this year, and we will continue monitoring each of these sites and recording our observations to build out that data set. That includes training staff members and volunteers to utilize iNaturalist. Our, our park rock guys are out in the field every day, and so they can snap pictures and help us as they're out in those areas, and volunteers as well. And we get volunteers by hosting outreach events to educate citizens and enable them to participate. There's, there's even a watered-down version of iNaturalist called Seek, and it's even easier to use, and that's what we've encouraged people to get started with as a first step. So considerations for fiscal year '24 and beyond. We want to maintain our current areas and consider expanding to new areas. The things that we take into consideration, we're taking a big leap this year, we're more than doubling our current inventory, so we have to consider what kind of resources are available to us between labor, seed, plants, and equipment, whether we have room to expand or not, based on what's available. The one thing, as I mentioned, is it's a rolling five-year seeding schedule. So after we've seeded something for five years in a row, the idea is to stop. So with Garden Ridge, five years from now, that's nineteen, that's nineteen acres that we wouldn't have to actively seed anymore, and we could potentially move our focus to another location at that point. So even if resources were to remain flat, we could potentially keep expanding on a rolling five-year basis. We'll continue curating our Lewisville plant list, and just keep tweaking it and tweaking it till we get exactly where we want to be. And then our considerations for future funding, there's federal grants, state grants, sometimes local grants that help fund these types of projects with different organizations. The realized cost savings, so with this, obviously, as we mentioned earlier, the reduction in mowing cycles, reduction in chemicals, all these things allow us to save money, and we could move some of that money that might have been in a mowing contract into these pollinator efforts, and then, of course, future action steps to really get jump-start on projects. So thank you. I know that was a lot, and I'm here for any questions.
Great stuff.
Very exciting.
Thank you, guys, for all the work. All right. With that, we've got about five minutes until we have to start our.
Yes, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there was a de-comment there. I didn't mean to interrupt. Do I have to sit down?
I got four minutes.
You have to enter it too.
We got a de-comment right there.
Okay. I think council everyone's gotten a copy of this from Ainsley Stelling regarding the Lake District branding. So if there's any comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Thomas. All right. With that, we are going to move out of work session, and we will reconvene in a regular session at 7:00 PM. All right, it is 7:00 PM. We're going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order. Starting off with the invocation, we could have Councilmember Bob Troyer.
Please stand and join me in a moment of contemplation and reflection.
Councilman Cade?
Yes, join me in a pledge to the American and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
James O'Leary.
All right.
Kelly? We've got our Assistant Director of Public Services, Mr. Kelly Rouse. Presentation of our 2023 DFW Clean Cities Gold Fleet Award.
We'll get one on the other side of David here. Good evening. I guess we're going to kick things off today. Once again, Kelly Rouse, Assistant Director of Public Services at the City of Lewisville. We got a couple of recognitions to do, but we couldn't give Aaron all the fun in presenting tonight, so here I am. I get to do a little brag session on our fleet group here tonight, so. Got a few words to say, and then we're going to explain why we're here tonight, so. Sustainability, it's not just a buzzword. It's not just a box to check. It's a forward-thinking approach to how we manage operations and plan and set goals for future populations in mind. It is, it's an expectation of our public. Being ahead of the curve here in the city of Lewisville, we've recognized the importance of sustainability, making it one of our big moves in our nationally-recognized and awarded Lewisville 2025 Plan. One of the biggest groups with the largest impact to sustainability is these gentlemen up here, our fleet operation. And since 2014, when we first adopted our, our clean fleet policy, Lewisville's been making strides in sustainable fleet management. Since that time, our friends at the North Central Texas Council of Governments, through the DFW Clean Cities Initiative, have recognized our fleet group with their efforts in fuel and pollution reduction, as well as implementation of alternative fuel and fleet solutions. Lewisville first received the Bronze Level Award in 2015, 2017, 2018, the Silver Award in 2019, and finally, the Gold Award in 2020, 2021, and 2022, which brings us here tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, with, with nearly two hundred and thirty member entities making up the North Central Texas Council of Governments, I'm proud to inform you that the city of Lewisville was one of seven, I repeat, one of seven groups recently recognized as being a leader in the region. So, so for four years in a row now, we've received the Gold Award for 2023 in recognition of our contributions to reduce transportation energy impacts and improve air quality. A big shout-out to Mr. Francis Moscaranis. He wasn't here tonight, he was a little under the weather, but he's our manager of internal services. Obviously, I'm, I'm flanked here by Mr. David Fruth. He's our operations supervisor for fleet, and then we have Mr. Grady Jones. And obviously, we have our fleet staff here to help showcase our, our power here, so. Want to recognize, shout from the rooftops, or just sit behind a podium and, and tell, tell these, tell a story that, hey, congratulations, awesome job tonight, and then we, we really appreciate all the hard work that y'all do. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Getting in close, getting in close.
Got to pretend we like you.
Yep, yep, yep.
It's not really an act.
Good job, guys. Appreciate it.
Great work, team. Next up, I have our Director of Public Services, Mr. Aaron Russell, recognizing our utilities managers and Assistant Public Service Director.
Thank you. So before I get started, I want to make sure and thank council for the wonderful facility that the fleet shop that they've moved into. It certainly is fitting that such a great group works in such a wonderful facility. So as I get into this presentation, I think it will become clear why Kelly gave the first This is one of those things that makes it so much fun to work on this team. It's people like Kelly and Caitlin. So to, to, to operate a water system, you have to have a water license. And those water licenses range from a Class D or a Class A. At the lowest level, a Class D, and then, of course, at the highest level, a Class A. To obtain those licenses requires a combination of education, experience, training. But before I get into all that, I want to talk about these two individuals. Caitlin got her bachelor's degree in biology from Austin College, and also has a minor in music. She plays the flute. Someday, we will talk her into playing the flute for us. She has thirteen years of experience, ten with Lewisville. She started with Lewisville as a senior lab tech, then moved up to environmental compliance supervisor, environmental quality manager, and then works as the utility manager today. She obtained her Class A water license in 2019, and her Class A wastewater license in 2022, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about how significant that is in a minute. Kelly received his bachelor's degree in criminology from UT Dallas, and has his master's in public administration from UT, University of North Texas. Has fourteen years of experience, twelve of which are in Lewisville. He started with Lewisville as a water operator many moons ago, moved up to chief operator, then moved to utilities maintenance, operations supervisor, then superintendent, utilities manager, and Assistant Director of Public Services today. So is there a job?
I also play the guitar.
Okay. So we will have our own band in public services.
Yeah, we've got our own band in public services.
So Kelly obtained his A, Class A water license in 2018, and his Class A wastewater license in 2023. So why is that significant? Well, give you some perspective, twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-six people own a operations license in the state of Texas. Of that, thirteen hundred and forty-two have a Class A water license. That's about four-point-seven percent. Eleven hundred and five have a Class A wastewater license. That's about three-point-eight percent. So how many have both? Four hundred and seven people out of the entire state of Texas. One-point-four-two percent of license holders own both. We have two of them, so. It's a, it's a great team to be a part of. I'm very proud to work with these folks, and just another reason why it's great to work in public services at the city of Lewisville.
Really appreciate all the hard work. I mean, that is a tremendous responsibility, to be responsible for the water system of one hundred and thirty-two thousand people, and I'm just so proud that we have amazing professionals like, like the two of you. I heard that those certifications come with a ten-year requirement to work here for an additional decade, so just, we love you guys. Have fun. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the Salvation Army. I think we, based on my list here, we've got like the entire army's worth of Salvation Army folks, so here, I'll join you down there. You know, I can't join you down there if I don't bring my cash. Can we do it?
Yes.
All right. Nobody's going to lose a limb? All right, we'll be all right. So, public safety. Folks, do you want to, you want to talk a little bit about ringing the bell?
I do. Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here once again. We so much appreciate being able to share with you, well, first of all, the needs that we have in our community, and how we can all, you know, help to meet those needs. And so, you know, this holiday season, the Salvation Army, well, all over, but especially from, you know, close to our heart, is here in Lewisville and North Texas, showing love that it exists beyond the most difficult situations. And we know that need knows no season. There is need all the time, and we have a vast network of, of places around North Texas ensuring that we can provide year-round support to those who are facing poverty and addiction and homelessness. So there's a lot of times, especially during this time of year, Christmas season, where people have to choose. And they're choosing between paying certain bills or gifts under the tree, and all those type of things, food on the table. And so, you know, we see the, the rising cost of things, and so people are facing those choices, and we are seeking to help them get through that, and to be able to, to have a better life and a better time of it, especially here at the holidays. And here in North Texas, we provided more than five-point-four million pounds of nutritious food at food pantries, sheltered more than fourteen thousand people. We don't have a shelter here, but we have them other places. Treatment for more than eight hundred individuals struggling with addiction, six-point-eight million dollars in rent and utility assistance to individuals and families, and nearly four thousand households exited to permanent housing. So we're kicking off the Red Kettle Campaign. Some of you may have seen us out there already. I've been running around all day trying to set out the, the equipment. And so I am so grateful to you, Mayor Gilmore, for signing up already, especially for the mayoral challenge. And, you know, last year, I enjoyed just being out there and spending a few minutes with you all. You are having fun, right?
We try.
We try, yeah. And it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be fun. You're out there raising money, being dingaling, I mean, ringing the bell. That's just an inside joke. But you and your city staff, Mayor, will be ringing the bell at our Red Kettle on Saturday, December ninth, and we, we number our kettles, and I even chose number nine, just to remind everyone that December ninth is your.
It's our day.
At the Sam's Club on Main Street. Sam's Club, Main Street, Mayor Gilmore and his kettle. Everybody needs a QR code. Actually, we're going to put this in here.
We're going to put that one up there. Oh, somebody else has got a QR code.
Well, that goes to our overall
I got you, I got you.
All right. So, and you can help out also by going to registratoring.com and by signing up there, you'll see the available places and shifts to be able to ring, and so we invite you to do that. Now, there's a scan to give that he has there, but on the days that he's not doing his kettle, you can give directly to the overall kettle. And then the other QR code is to sign up through the registratoring.com. And Mayor, I'm not going to give this to you right now, but hopefully you had one of these last year.
Yes, you can't touch the money.
Well, not only that, but you know what this is for, because when people are putting money in, you want to just stuff it down a little bit more.
Stuff it in the kettle.
Yeah, so we very much appreciate your support and look forward to a great day. And by the way, that's the same day that our National Commander is going to be doing his challenge, by the way. So we're hoping that we can raise quite a bit of money, especially on that particular day.
So we're going to ask just a couple of quick things. First of all, I need to thank all the staff and, of course, my city council, who have all signed up. I think we've just about filled the time slots available on the 9th, but if you want to volunteer, I'm sure you can talk to any of the folks with the Salvation Army badge, and they will get you hooked up with some volunteer hours. With that, this kettle tonight actually counts towards the mayor's challenge, so I also want to thank all the other mayors, and hopefully they're doing something similar. But I would ask that if you brought a little cash tonight, or you have the opportunity to go ahead and put some money in the bucket, I'm already there, so I'm going to start first. And if y'all have something, come on by, and I'm going to sit here and ring the bell. No rush. I'm going to go to the in-laws' house and eat boiled food. I have a bigger bill. My wife, she can't eat. Nice, thank you, Richard. My wife? Oh, she's from, uh, I shouldn't know. So your ankles hate each other. Well, I usually zip mine in my fingers like this. Well, thank you all. I appreciate it. I'm sure all the folks and the families that will benefit from the Salvation Army this season will appreciate it, and we are so proud to have the Salvation Army here to participate and be part of the giving season. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right. Item D1, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from heavy industrial district to planned development mixed-use district on 17.5827 acres legally described as lots 2A and 2B, block A of the Elm Fork Industrial Park addition located at the north of 701 East Main Street, as requested by Jennifer Burns, O'Halla Holdings, on behalf of Granite Construction Company, the property owner. And this is case 23-09-7-PZ. This planned development zone change allows for a mixed-income development of up to 650 units in a variety of unit types just east of the Denton County Transit Authority's A-Train Old Town Lewisville Station. The Lewisville Public Finance Corporation approved the standard at Old Town Project to provide affordable housing in Old Town on June 12, 2023. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, 6 to nothing, on October 17, 2023. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above with the following conditions. One, all units within the planned development shall be under one ownership and must be managed by onsite staff available during regular business hours and within one hour after hours. Two, all units within the planned development shall have access to all amenities within the planned development, including but not limited to all swimming pools, clubhouses, dog parks, and open spaces for each respective phase. And three, the cottage units shall consist of varying architectural details and colors. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our planning director, available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. I do have Jennifer Burns available for any questions, and she is representing O'Halla. Counsel, if there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth with the conditions.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption with the following conditions. One, all units within the planned development shall be under the ownership, under one ownership, and must be managed by onsite staff available during regular business hours and within one hour after hours. Two, all units within the planned development shall have access to all amenities within the planned development, including but not limited to all swimming pools, clubhouses, dog parks, and open spaces for each respective phase. And three, the cottages shall, the cottage units shall consist of varying architectural details and color.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 17.5827 acres of land legally described as lots 2A and 2B, block A, located at 701 East Main Street, from heavy industrial HI district zoning to planned development mixed-use PD MU district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item two, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from agricultural open space to district, from agricultural open space district to light industrial district on 5.237 acres out of the P. Higgins survey abstract 525, being a portion of 704 Holfords Prairie Road, as requested by Mayor Incorporated, the property owner, case 23-09-15-PZ. The applicant requests to rezone the property to light industrial to support future commercial development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, 6 to nothing, on October 17, 2023, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke is available for questions, and the public hearing is now open. City secretary, do we have any comment cards?
No, sir.
Counsel, if there's no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. A public hearing is now closed. Entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 5.237 acres of land out of the P. Higgins survey abstract number 525, located on a portion of 704 Holfords Prairie Road, from agricultural open space AO district zoning to light industrial LA district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the zoning amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item three, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for an accessory dwelling unit commercial and for a contractor's yard on approximately 1.129 acres out of the S.M. Hayden abstract 537, located at 504 Barfneck Lane, zone heavy industrial district, as requested by Ashton Miller McAdams, on behalf of Joseph Anglion, ALS Development LLC, the property owner, case number 23-07-11-SUP. American Landscape Systems operates at 1780 Midway Road and expanded their operation to include 504 Barfneck Lane as a contractor's yard and accessory dwelling unit commercial for employees. American Landscape Systems converted this single-family home to a commercial use without the required zoning and development permits, and code enforcement action was taken requiring to go through the process of a special use permit. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, 6 to nothing, on October 17, 2023, and it's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Lutke is available for questions. City secretary, do we have any comment cards?
No, sir.
We do have, the public hearing is now open. If there are no comments or questions from council, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sub moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
One second, Mr. Mayor. I'm having a technical issue.
All right.
City Code, known as the Unified Development Code, by amending Article 4, Chapter 4, alternative standards to update the applicability, processes, authority, and effect of the alternative standards as outlined therein, and to correct certain inconsistencies in terms therein, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote.
No, nobody's voting yet.
Give us one second, Mayor.
We got a little technical. There we go. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, counsel. Item E, visitor-citizens forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. We do have Mr. Jeff Woods. If you could state your name and address for the record. Aaron, thank you.
I'm Mr. Mayor of the Council of the House. It's 1001 Forest Park Drive, Lewisville, Texas. Tonight, I just wanted to say that I am ecstatic with all the development and plans of the Lake Park area. It's phenomenal seeing the old fishing barge, which was true dear to my heart, finally disappear. But with all the improvements that are coming, man, it's looking amazing. And with that being said, also, the Lake District, as was mentioned tonight in the workshop, just amazing, all those things. And the vision 2025 for Lewisville, the same. With these, though, is inviting tourists, is inviting guests, people from out of town, to also attend Lewisville, to visit these different facilities and all the, especially like with the Lake Park enhancement, where we have the proposed yurts and cabins to be visited as well. It will also just bring in more people to these short-term rentals that we have in single-family neighborhoods. My point in this is that the city is so committed to all of these programs, and I'm just asking that the city would be also committed to keeping hotels in hotel districts, because with the influx of this, it's just going to create more and more problems, I should say, with the short-term rentals that we already have in existence, if they're not banned in single-family neighborhoods. We stand behind everything that going forward, you know, with all these new programs. We're excited to see it because we live in the area, you know. Lake Park is our backyard. So, but we're excited to see that. But I just wanted to plead that you take in consideration that, I won't even go through, you know, just the past few weeks of all the things that have happened in our neighborhoods specifically, but I'm just asking you to please look at that from a standpoint that I've heard entertainment district mentioned, and I know in the city of Arlington, under their ordinance, where they allowed for an entertainment district as an agendum because that's what the city wanted, but the ordinance itself was set forth to prevent short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. That was the purpose. That was the intention, and that's what's been withheld in the courts. And so I'm just asking you to take that into consideration, that we want to keep Lewisville. We want to see it thrive, but at the same time, we want to keep our neighborhoods as we have known them for so long. And so we're, actually, I mean, y'all's decision is our livelihoods. And so we're just asking you to take every bit of that into consideration, that we don't have with the influx, specifically our area with this new proposed and all the development thing, it's just going to cause more traffic, more influx, and more wanted use. And I don't want to see that conflict with what the city has planned, you know? Why should there be competition for that when you want them to use the facilities and stuff that you're providing? So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments for public comment? Item F, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the
With these, though, is inviting tourists, is inviting guests, people from out of town, to also attend Lewisville to visit these different facilities and all the, especially like with the lake park enhancement where we have the proposed yurts and cabins to be visited as well. It will also just bring in more people to these short-term rentals that we have in single-family neighborhoods. My point in this is that the city is so committed to all of these programs, and I'm just asking that the city would be also committed to keeping hotels in hotel districts because with the influx of this, it's just going to create more and more problems, I should say, with the short-term rentals that we already have in existence if they're not banned in single-family neighborhoods. We stand behind everything that going forward, you know, with all these new programs. We're excited to see it because we live in the area, you know. Lake Park is our backyard. So, but we're excited to see that. But I just wanted to plead that you take in consideration that I won't even go through, you know, just the past few weeks of all the things that have happened in our neighborhood specifically. But I'm just asking you to please look at that from a standpoint that I've heard entertainment district mentioned, and I know in the city of Arlington, under their ordinance where they allowed for entertainment district as an agendum because that's what the city wanted. But the ordinance itself was set forth to prevent short-term rentals in single-family neighborhoods. That was the purpose. That was attention. That's what's been withheld in the courts. And so I'm just asking you to take that into consideration, that we want to keep Lewisville. We want to see it thrive, but at the same time, we want to keep our neighborhoods as we have known them for so long. And so we're actually, I mean, y'all's decision is our livelihoods. And so we're just asking you to take every bit of that into consideration that we don't have with the influx. Specifically, our area with this new proposed and all the development thing is just going to cause more traffic, more influx, and more want to use. And I don't want to see that conflict with what the city has planned, you know. Why should there be competition for that when you want them to use the facilities and stuff that you're providing? So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments for, public comment? All right. Item F, consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City secretary, have there any requests to remove anything from consent?
No, sir.
I have no requests to remove from consent for counsel. So counsel, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item G, regular hearing. Consideration of appointments to the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team. The Denton County United Way sponsored the creation of the Denton County Citizens Council on Mental Health in February 2014. Denton County United Way President and CEO Gary Henderson presented findings from a study conducted by the Meadows Foundation and distributed a copy to the city council at the June 1, 2015 workshop session. Denton County United Way is seeking appointees for the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team through December 31, 2026, and is recommended that the city council appoint a city council member and the Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services as the two appointee positions and appoint the position of Chief of Police as the law enforcement work group representative to serve the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team. I want to be clear on this one. I think it's important that we've shifted these to be the titles as opposed to the actual individuals, so that if we, if and when we have changes in those positions, it continues to move forward with those two departments of the city. I think those are the ones that are most closely impacted by the Mental Health Board and have the greatest impact serving on there. I really appreciated serving with all the guys on there over the last few years, but unfortunately, I have to step away from this one. I would ask if councilmember Cade would be willing to serve on this particular board?
Yes, I would.
So.
I'd be honored.
Great. Counsel, entertain a motion.
Move to appoint Councilwoman Cade and the Director of Neighborhood and Inspection Services as the two appointee positions and appoint the position of Chief of Police as the law enforcement work group representative to serve the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11, consideration of acceptance of the resignation of Dr. Walter Legg, licensed veterinarian on the Animal Services Advisory Committee, declaring a vacancy exist for the licensed veterinarian position on the Animal Services Advisory Committee and appointments to the animal welfare representative and the licensed veterinarian positions on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. At the September 18, 2023 city council meeting, a vacancy was declared for the animal welfare representative position on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. Dr. Walter Legg, the licensed veterinarian, did not seek reappointment on the Animal Services Advisory Committee during the 2023 boards and commissions appointment process. Two applications have since been submitted, meeting the qualifications for service in these positions. It's recommended that the city council declare one vacancy and consider appointments to the animal welfare representative and the licensed veterinarian positions on the Animal Services Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to declare one vacancy and to appoint Don Harden to the animal welfare representative position and Kimberly, I know I'm going to slaughter this, is it Hinefield, to the licensed veterinarian position on the Animal Services Advisory Committee as set forth in the caption, please.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Reports. Item H, reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Kelly, would you mind?
No report today.
Counselmember Green?
Nothing to report.
Counselmember Jones?
No report, but just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and happy holidays to everyone out there. That's it.
Counselmember Cade?
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and pray that everyone stays safe. But I'd also like to acknowledge a great gentleman and an officer that we lost this week. He was very much loved and respected throughout the city, and he will be missed. Officer Sherwood, let me just put his name out there. Didn't know if I was going to get that out.
Counselmember Troyer?
Yes, mayor, I have several things for the Lewisville Grand Theater. In terms of performances, we have A Season to Rejoice presented by the Metropolitan Winds on December 3, and Will Hearn's Grand Ole Christmas Show presented by Lewisville Grand Theater on December 8. And then, as always, on Friday nights, the Visual Art League of Lewisville sponsors the acoustic jam session from 6 to 9. And there are several exhibitions going on or coming up. First of all, Just Around the Corner presented by the University of North Texas MFA Visual Arts Program, that is through November 25. The Gift of Art presented by the City of Lewisville, December 2 through December 22. And then Older Than Dirt and The Gap in Between presented by the City of Lewisville, December 2 through the 22. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City attorney? City secretary?
No report, mayor.
Mr. Lutke?
Mayor, on behalf of the planning staff, I would like to thank you and Councilwoman Ronnie Cade, Councilwoman Kristen Green, and Councilman, our deputy mayor pro tem, Patrick Kelly, for attending our, the Texas chapter of the American Planning Association's annual estate planning conference in Corpus Christi, November 8 through 10. I hope y'all enjoyed the conference, but also want to share with the rest of the council and staff that the city was honored with three awards from the Texas chapter of the American Planning Association. The first was, we were recognized for planning excellence. This is an annual award that the city of Lewisville has received over the last 20 years since that award was established, so we're very proud of that. We also received a gold level environmental award for our healthy infrastructure plan. So very proud of that, particularly with the staff from our Parks Recreation Department joining us for that recognition. And then finally, the third award, Old Town Lewisville, was recognized as a great neighborhood in the Great Places in Texas program. And there will be additional recognition later on in the spring of '24 related to that award. So we are very, very proud and honored to receive those awards. And we want to thank the council for all of your support, for all of our plans and all of the hard work that staff does to make Lewisville the great city that it is.
Thank you, Richard. The samples. Mr. Solomon?
Mayor, councilmembers, parks fans, included in your agenda today is our 2023 Park Dedication and Development Report. By our ordinance, every five years, we have to deliver a report to y'all that kind of spells out what we've collected in parkland dedication and development and how we've, excuse me, how we've used it to increase the number of people living within a 10-minute walk to a park in Lewisville.
I want to thank you for the addition of the economic development information as part of that report as well. I think our ED team gave us some additional, you know, here's, here's kind of the, when we have to negotiate that stuff, what are the impacts? So I appreciate that as well. Thank you very much. Ms. Gaffia? Mr. Russell?
I do have the lake report for you. We are at 89.6% full. That's just under 520 feet.
Mr. Russell?
I want to thank everybody for a great year that I've been having here in Lewisville, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And our building is going up at ludicrous speed, let's just say that. And block walls are going up, steelwork on the stairwells, and the roof's going over the fire station. Everything's going well. Happy Thanksgiving.
Anybody that can make a baseball's reference in the middle of my council meeting wins points. Coming up, we have, I mean, it's the holiday season. It has started whether you feel like it or not. It is here. I want to remind some folks that we have on December 1 and 2, I know that's a couple weeks out, but I don't think, don't know if people have quite realized it's right around the corner. We have our first Friday event that is coupled with our annual tree lighting event. And then the next morning, we've got our holiday, holiday at the hall is split, so you're going to have breakfast and the parade on the Saturday. So keep that in mind. It's a little different from what we've done in past days, but I actually think it's going to be better for families simply because you're not having to figure out how to stay there the whole day. You can do one or the other or both over the two-day period. So I really appreciate the flexibility from the event staff to try something a little bit different this year. Just keep your eyes open for it, and I love that it's linking up with Small Business Saturday so everybody can get down here and maybe find some great Christmas and holiday gifts for folks. With that, I believe we need to go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, subchapter D, Section 551.072, real estate property acquisitions, Section 551.087, economic development, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, legal issues related to short-term rental properties, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, pending litigation, City of Lewisville, Texas versus Massamun Mission, case number CV-2023-03139, City of Lewisville, Texas versus Mosin R. Ravjani, case number CV-2023-03136, and City of Lewisville, Texas versus City of Knowledge and Massamun Mission, case number CV-2023-03138, all proceedings in eminent domain in the county court at law number 2 of Denton County, Texas. We are in closed session. All right, it's 8:52. We're going to be back into regular session. As there is no additional action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned.